Good morning, good morning. Welcome to the Committee, a Subcommittee on Landmarks, Public Sightings and Dispositions. At this time, please silence all electronics and do not approach the dais. I repeat, please do not approach the dais. If you haven't testified, if you're testifying, please fill out a slip at the back of the room with the Sergeant-at-Arms. At this time, please, like I said, please silence all electronics. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, you may begin.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of Subcommittee on Landmarks, Public Sightings and Dispositions. I am Camila Hanks, and I am the Chair of the Subcommittee. I am joined today by my Councilmember's Majority Leader, Amanda Farias. Councilmember Felice is online, Councilmember Marte, and Councilmember Nurse. Before we begin with today's agenda, I will remind everyone this meeting is being held in a hybrid format. And for members of the public who wish to testify remotely, we ask that you first register online, and you may do so now by visiting www.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up. And then sign into the Zoom and remain signed in until you have testified. For anyone with us today who is in person wishing to testify, if you have not already done so, please see one of our sergeants to fill out a speaker's card. We will call your name at the appropriate time. For anyone wishing to submit written testimony on the items being heard today, we ask that you please send it via email to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Include the land use number and/or the project name in the subject line, and video and audio testimony will not be accepted. I will remind members of the public that this is a government proceeding, and decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent unless and until called to testify. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony may submit, excuse me, as testimony but may submit transcript of such recordings to the sergeant for including in the hearing record. So on today's agenda, we have 547-seat primary school facility, a school sighting application by the School Construction Authority for a project in Majority Leader Farias's district in the Bronx. We also have West 128th Street dash 129th, a project in Councilmember Salam's district in Manhattan, as well as several votes. Please note that LU 238 and LU 234 through 236 on today's agenda are laid over. So first, we will hold several votes. The first vote is to approve LU 225 through 228 for the Beacon in an application submitted by the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development for an approval of an urban development action area project and disposition of real property, a zoning map amendment, a zoning text amendment, and a city map change for the property in East Harlem in Councilmember Ayala's district. The next vote will be to approve LU's, land use 237, 1093 dash 1095 Jerome Avenue submitted by HPD for an approval of an urban development action area in an urban development action area project and the related disposition of city-owned property to facilitate development of an 11-story mixed-use building in the Bronx in Councilmember Stevens' district. The next vote is to approve LU 247 through 248, 2201 Davidson Avenue Project submitted by HPD for the approval of the urban development action area product, project in a real property tax exemption for property located in the Bronx in Councilmember Sanchez's district. I'd like to recognize any of the councilmembers who are here today who would like to speak on these projects. Hey, members of the Subcommittee who have questions, let me know. I will now call for a vote to approve LU 225 through 228 for the Beacon, to approve LU 237 for 1093 dash 1095 Jerome Avenue, a UDAAP, to approve land use 247 and 248 for 2201 Davidson Avenue. Council, please call the roll.
Chair Hanks?
I vote aye on all.
Councilmember Felice, online. I'll return to you. Councilmember Marte?
I vote aye.
Majority Leader Farias?
I vote aye.
Councilmember Nurse?
I vote aye.
Again, calling on Councilmember Felice, online. Councilmember Felice, can you hear me online?
Thank you, Council. We will leave the vote open for any other Subcommittee members who may wish to join us later.
But so far, by a vote of four in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the items are adopted and referred to the full Land Use Committee.
Apologies, I vote aye on all, sorry.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. By a vote of five in the affirmative, the items are adopted and referred to the Land Use Committee, but we will continue to leave it open.
I will now open a public hearing for a pre-considered land use item for 547-seat primary school facility, an application by the New York City Construction Authority for the site selection for a new approximately 547-seat primary school facility in Majority Leader Farias's district in the Bronx. Madam Majority Leader, would you like to make a statement?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm here today to speak in strong support of this proposed new primary school in District 18, a project that is not just important, but absolutely necessary to meet the needs of our students and ensure our city complies with state law. This is about more than just adding seats, it's about creating real educational opportunities and giving our children the modern, high-quality learning environment they need to thrive. Overcrowding is a serious issue in school District 11, which serves nearly all of the Northeast Bronx, directly borders my districts, and includes a portion of District 18. Right now, students in this area are in overcrowded classrooms that limit their ability to receive the attention, resources, and support they deserve. The state-mandated class size reductions require the city to meet specific class size limits by 2028, so without this new school, we likely will not be in compliance with that. And with the recent Metro North plans where I secured many community benefits and negotiations, this was a piece of the puzzle we were working on, a new school for the area, and I'm happy to see us get to a place where the community is receiving one. This project will create 547 much-needed seats for students in grades of K through 5, alleviating overcrowding and ensuring students have access to smaller class sizes that improve learning outcomes. As you'll see in the proposal, the proposed T-shaped site is bounded by nine residential properties to the south and west, Zoriga to the north, and St. Raymond Avenue to the east, with Parker Street to the south and Westchester Square. The school will feature approximately 22 classrooms for pre-K through 5th grade, two special education classrooms, eight District 75 classrooms, and key resource spaces, including a speech and reading resource room, a music room and art room, a cafeteria and kitchen, a library, a gymnasium, and both guidance and medical suites. The site plan also includes an approximately 14,000-square-foot at-grade play area to ensure students have access to safe and outdoor recreation. The work we do today will have a lasting impact on future generations of our Bronx students, and so we must prioritize education and make sure every child has access to a safe, supportive, and effective learning environment. To me, this is a common-sense investment, one that ensures compliance with state law, alleviating overcrowding, and most importantly, giving our kids the best possible start in life. So I urge my colleagues to support this project so we can continue building stronger schools, stronger communities, and a stronger future for the Bronx. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Appearing today on this proposal is Andrea Bender and Nicole Montero. Those wishing to testify remotely must register online by visiting the Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. Panelists, to ensure that your microphone is on, the Council, will you please administer the affirmation?
Panelists, would you please raise your right hand and state your name for the record?
Andrea Bender.
Nicole Montero.
Nicole Montero. And do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this Subcommittee and in answer to all Councilmember questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, applicant panelists. For the viewing public, if you need to, excuse me, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send us an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. The applicant team may now begin.
Good morning, Chair Hanks, Majority Leader Farias, and members of the committee. My name is Andrea Bender, and I am the Vice President of External Affairs at the New York City School Construction Authority. I am joined by my colleague Nicole Montero in our Real Estate Department. I want to say thank you so much for having us this morning, and thank you for your support, Councilmember. We appreciate it very much. We are so pleased to be here to present a proposed new approximately 547-seat primary school at 1631 1659 Zoriga Avenue in the Westchester Square neighborhood of the Bronx. Pursuant to Section 1731 of the New York State Public Authorities Law, the New York City School Construction Authority has undertaken the site selection process for a new approximately 547-seat primary school facility located at 1631 1659 Zoriga Avenue, Block 3991, lots 87, 78, 75, and 6 in the borough of the Bronx. The site is approximately 35,212 square feet, about eight tenths of an acre. The site is located within Bronx Community Board 10 and Community Education Council District 11. The purpose of the proposed project is to provide additional long-term capacity to relieve overcrowding in school District 11. The SCA's five-year capital plan for fiscal years 2025 to 2029 allocates capital funding to address existing overcrowding and forecasted changes in student enrollments and to support New York City Public Schools' implementation of class-size reduction mandates. During the 2023-2024 school year, Community Education Council Number 11's elementary schools collectively operated at 103.86% of their target capacity. Next slide, please. This is an overview of the project situated on Zoriga Avenue within the Westchester Square neighborhood. The Red Bullseye is our proposed site. Next slide, please. And here is our tax map showing the specific block and lot of the proposed school site. Again, that's Block 3991, lots 87, 78, 75, and 6. Next slide, please. Here we have a little closer aerial view of the site. Next slide, please. This notice of filing of our site plan was published in AM New York and the City Record on October 31, 2024, at which time Community Education Council 11, Bronx Community Board 10, and the City Planning Commission were notified of the proposed site plan. The Community Education Council held a public hearing on November 22, 2024, and Bronx Community Board 10 held a public hearing on November 12, 2024. All public comments received on the site were considered as part of our site selection process. The SCA affirms the site plan pursuant to Section 1731 of the New York Public Authorities Law. In accordance with Section 1732 of the Public Authorities Law, the SCA submitted the proposed site plan to the Mayor and City Council by letter dated March 7, 2025. Next slide, please. The next few slides are photos of the site's existing condition. This first slide shows you the south view looking onto Zoriga Avenue. Here you will see the two-story house and the back end of a three-story house with a three-story school addition at 1651 Zoriga Avenue. Next slide, please. Some more views of the site. Next slide, please. And this is a view of the parking lot and garage on the site. Next slide, please. Should SCA receive approval to acquire the property, a new primary school will be constructed, anticipated to open in 2029. The school will include 22 classrooms for pre-kindergarten to 5th grade, two special education classrooms, eight District 75 classrooms, a speech resource room, a reading resource room, a music room and art room, a kitchen cafeteria, library, gymatorium, guidance and medical suites, as well as general administrative and support spaces. It is also anticipated to include the creation of an approximately 14,000-square-foot at-grade play yard. We look forward to the Subcommittee's favorable consideration of this proposed site plan and would be pleased to answer any questions from the committee. Thank you so much.
We'd now like to recognize, thank you so much. We'd now like to recognize any of my colleagues if they have questions. Seeing none, thank you. This applicant panel is now excused.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Council, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this item?
We don't have any signed up.
With there being no more questions for this panel, this witness panel is now, sorry. Sorry, if there are any remote public participants who wish to testify and have not already done so, please press the raised hand button now, and if there are any of us, any of you in person, please see the Sergeant-at-Arms to fill out a speaker card. With there being no other members of the public who wish to testify regarding a pre-considered land use item for a 540-seat primary school facility, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. I will now open a public hearing for the two related pre-considered land use items for West 128th and 129th Street Cluster Project, an application by NYC HPD for an approval of an urban development action area project and an approval of an Article 11 tax exemption to facilitate the preservation of four buildings in Councilmember Salam's district in Manhattan. Appearing today on this proposal is Regina Lovett from HPD and Donald Notice, Executive Director of West Harlem Group Assistance, Inc. Those wishing to testify remotely, please register online by visiting the Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. Panelists, please ensure that your microphone is on. Green. Red means go. And your microphone is turned on. Council, will you please administer the affirmation?
Panelists, would you please raise your right hand and state your name for the record?
Regina Lovett.
Donald Notice.
And Ariel Rawlings, I'm also with HPD.
Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but your, but the truth in your testimony before this Subcommittee and in answer to all Councilmember questions?
Yes.
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 Thank you, applicant panelists. Please begin. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. This applicant panel team may begin.
Hi, my name is Regina Lovett, and I'm a project manager for HPD's Affordable Neighborhood Cooperative Program, or ANCP. First, I would like to thank the Subcommittee on Landmarks, Public Sightings, and Dispositions for your time today. This afternoon, I'll be speaking on the West 128, 129 Street Cluster, which is a proposal to rehabilitate four buildings in Harlem under HPD's Affordable Neighborhood Cooperative Program. Next slide, please. The purpose of this project is to renovate the tenant and to rem lease or till buildings and to enable the existing residents, of which there are 38 in this cluster, to become homeowners. The structure of this project will be a collaboration between the sponsor, West Harlem Group Assistance, Incorporated, of whom we have Donald Notice with us today, partnering with HPD. The sponsor will manage the building during construction and throughout the conversion process. During construction, the nonprofit Restoring Communities, HDFC, will own the building to prevent any potential conflicts of interest with the sponsor. Upon conversion, the building will be owned and managed by the residents of the buildings, all of which include the existing residents and new purchasers of the currently vacant units. The requirements for the buildings to convert to cooperative are to have 80% of existing residents attend at least eight co-op success trainings, which will be provided during the construction period. 80% of the existing residents must also remain current on their rent payments, and lastly, 80% of the existing tenants must choose to purchase their units at co-op conversion. Next slide, please. To speak on the affordability of the units, existing residents will pay $250 if they are earning up to 80% of the area median income. Residents that earn more than 80% of the area median income will pay $2,500 to purchase their converted unit. Existing residents will not obtain personal mortgages for the purchase of their units, and we anticipate that the vast majority, if not all, of the existing residents of the projects will qualify for the lower $250 sales price. For new purchasers of the currently vacant units, of which there are 58, purchase prices will be set affordable to 80% of area median income. Those prices are set so that purchasers' personal mortgages plus monthly maintenance and utilities will not exceed roughly one-third of their income to remain affordable per federal definitions of housing cost burden. The area median income for a family of three in 2024 is shown below on the slides. Next slide, please. The till rents that the residents are currently paying do not produce enough income to maintain the buildings. The monthly costs through ANCP will change through a rent restructuring process at the point of conversion to ensure that all the buildings remain financially and physically healthy after they convert to co-op. The expenses required to maintain a building include insurance, heat and hot water, electric in public areas, maintenance staff salaries, water in sewer, accountant and legal expenses, extermination, and minor repairs, just to name a few. The shareholders will collectively decide how much they would like to increase maintenance biannually based on future building expenses and income needs, but there is a required 2% increase every year per the AMCP term sheet. For the co-op to have enough money to cover the prior mentioned expenses, initial monthly maintenance after the buildings convert to cooperative have been set to 110% of projected expenses. In other words, the initial residential income will cover anticipated expenses plus a 10% cushion. Any households for whom the monthly maintenance payment is unaffordable will receive a Section 8 voucher that ensures they do not pay more than 30% of their total income on housing costs. The voucher will subsidize the difference between the share that the resident can afford and the total monthly maintenance amount. The voucher can expand in the future to cover an increased gap if, for example, maintenance increases become necessary for the building but the household's income does not. Please note that the total monthly expense estimate below is a current estimate of what monthly maintenance may look like at conversion, but due to the fact that the building costs may change over the period of construction and conversion, the exact cost will be set closer to actual conversion date to ensure that the initial maintenance is set with the most updated information in mind. All in all, due to the availability of Section 8 vouchers and the way that the income restrictions are structured, no one will pay more than 30% of their income towards housing costs. Next slide, please. This hearing is an example of what the total monthly payments would be for a household in ANCP with an income of $20,000 per year. The total maintenance for a one-bedroom is roughly $1,200 based on the income needed to support the building on a per-unit basis. A shareholder earning 15% of the area median income will only pay $500, which is 30% of their monthly income. The voucher will subsidize the rest of the maintenance, which in this example case is $700. Next slide, please. Typical project costs that are included in the rehabilitation work are including new building systems, which include low-carbon electrical and heating systems, and new water and gas lines. Costs also go into legalizing the unit layouts and bringing the buildings up to code, introducing new and improved accessibility features, including accessible showers and wheelchair accessibility within the units. Most residents in these buildings have seen and signed off on their new units layouts. Next slide, please. Importantly, investing in these major upgrades now will reduce future maintenance, repair, and operating costs while ensuring the building is newly renovated and in good condition before ownership is transferred. Residents are typically relocated during the construction period, which is about 24 to 30 months, which the project budget covers the difference between the current amount they pay, which is their till rents, and the relocation unit rents until conversion. The project budget also covers other costs related, like moving, movers, boxes, tape, and storage. In these buildings' case specifically, some tenants are relocated early due to concerns about current building safety. This project also provides co-op success trainers to the residents to help build their knowledge and ability to become successful homeowners. Lastly, the budget provides a substantial reserve fund to set up the buildings for success from the start and help the building pay for any unforeseen emergencies down the road. Next slide, please. The typical financing for a co-op project is the majority is paid through a city capital loan, which will be provided in the amount of approximately $560,000 per unit. There will be $0 debt payments and $0 interest payments for 40 years to match the term of the Article 11 property tax exemption we are seeking. If the co-op chooses to stay under a regulatory agreement, then there will be no loan payment due and $0 debt payments for the 40-year regulatory period, although HPD anticipates that the buildings will be able to renew the regulatory period and indefinitely defer any payments on the city loan at the end of the 40-year term, generating permanently affordable homeownership units for the city. HPD's loan does not impact the maintenance fee amount because, as discussed in the earlier slide, the maintenance fee amount has been set to cover the building expenses, and the HPD loan is not an expense due to its $0 monthly payment. The Article 11 tax exemption that we're applying for will reduce and eliminate the property tax costs on the building for at least 40 years, if not longer. Because the buildings are currently city-owned, the subsidized acquisition cost of $1 per building also brings down the total development cost significantly. And lastly, this project is applying to receive funding through New York State AHC in an amount of $75,000 per dwelling unit, which will not be repaid. The sales proceeds from both the occupied units, plus primarily from the vacant units, will help to provide funds to finance the project. Next slide, please. The shared equity model helps co-op shareholders build wealth over time, maintaining long-term affordability for the community. This chart illustrates the estimated equity growth for a two-bedroom unit post-conversion, assuming a 3% annual price increase and 80% AMI income restriction. You will see that the initial purchasers of the units in the future co-ops are incentivized to hold on to their units longer, which builds equity and yields higher profits for themselves upon selling. Residents will have the opportunity to review specific details in the Attorney General Accepted Offering Plan before purchasing shares. Importantly, investing in these, I'm sorry. Next slide, please. For a more granular development timeline for this project, the sponsor designation process has already occurred. As mentioned previously, West Harlem Group Assistance has been designated. We are currently in the pre-development phase. We have continuous engagement with the existing residents of the project. The scope of work has been determined, and the budget and financing are currently in the works, and we have 94% tenant sign-off on layouts, and we plan to obtain 100% in the coming weeks. We plan to have all tenants relocated by the fall of 2025. We are anticipating that construction will take between 24 and 30 months. During that period, the deed of the buildings will be transferred from the city to Restoring Communities, the temporary owner of the buildings. Then the construction loan will close, and construction will begin as soon as the tenants are relocated. Tenants will attend previously mentioned co-op homeownership trainings, and then the sponsor will engage an attorney to create an offering plan, which allows, which is what allows us to convert the co-op at the end of construction completion. After construction finishes, we anticipate it will take nine and 12 months to go through the marketing and conversion process so that the tenants will be moved back into the buildings as soon as it's ready. Once construction is completed and the existing residents are moved back to their rehab units, marketing for the vacant units will begin. The building will convert to co-op once those units have signed purchasers, at which point the deed will be transferred to the co-op and the construction loan will be paid off at the co-op conversion point by permanent financing. Next slide, please. Here, I'll pass it off to Donald Notice of West Harlem Group Assistance, Incorporated, to speak about their organization and some project specifics on the following slides. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Donald Notice, Executive Director for West Harlem Group Assistance, and I want to first thank the Subcommittee on Landmarks, Public Sightings, and Dispositions for giving us this opportunity to present this project. West Harlem Group Assistance is a not-for-profit community development corporation. We're in our 54th year providing affordable housing and social services to the Harlem community. We have worked on several HPD projects for the last 40 years. Some of our notable projects that we worked on was, we're working on two PAC deals right now with NITRA, one 693 units, that's 95% completed, and we just started another 1,200-unit project in December that construction is just starting. We worked with the Section 202 program. We have two senior citizen housing of 166 units, providing affordable housing for senior citizens. And we have two homeless shelters, one DHS shelter and one HPD shelter, and we have a food pantry that's servicing about 25,000 people a month on food disparities in the Harlem community. We also worked on two ANCP projects. One was 100% completed and sold to existing residents and to first-time home buyers, and that one was 11 units. And we're working on, where we just finished up construction on a 50-unit project, which the construction is finished, and we're getting ready to do the marketing on that project and providing affordable homeownership opportunities. A little bit about the cluster, West 128th and 129th Street. Again, West Harlem Group Assistance will, next slide, please, I'm sorry. West Harlem Group Assistance will act as a sponsor. Our construction lender will be Webster Bank. There's 96 units in the project that's going to be a gut renovation, 38 of which are for the existing residents, and 40% of the project, and 58 units will be first-time home buyers. The sales prices will be, for the existing families, will be $250, add or below 80% of AMI, or $2,500. The sale prices for the new residents will be affordable at 80% of AMI. Monthly maintenance fees for all residents set to cover 100% of the project's building expenses, and this project is scheduled to close in the summer of 2025. The projected unit post-rehab is five studios, 22 one-bedrooms, 35 two-bedrooms, 33 bedrooms, and four five-bedrooms. And I want to, again, thank the committee for hearing our project, and we hoping that we have a positive vote from the subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Now, I'd like to recognize, Councilmember Brennan is here. If you'd like to open the vote. How would you like to vote on all three of these matters?
Thank you, Chair. I vote aye.
Thank you. By a vote of six and affirmative, zero abstentions, and zero in the negative, the matters are adopted and referred to the full Land Use Committee.
Thank you, counsel. So, is there any of my members who have questions?
So I have a few questions. Can you briefly describe in detail how the current buildings in the respective sites fell into disrepair, and what is the process that has been working, both with the current tenants, both in relocation and providing an opportunity for them to move back into the buildings if they so choose?
So the buildings, all four of them, are in city ownership and have been for many decades. I would have to confirm the exact date, but I'm happy to. In, on or around the early 2000s, they signed a net lease through the Tenant Interim Lease Program, which is part of HPD's asset management team, and have been managed as city-owned rental buildings since then. The rents on all of those units have remained flat since that period and do not produce enough income to support the buildings, which Regina spoke to a bit. And so part of the rehabilitation process is restructuring the rents to maintenance amounts once the buildings convert to cooperative, that ensure that the buildings are producing enough income to maintain them. HPD also, through the project budget, will provide the buildings with substantial reserve contributions at conversion to cooperative that help the building with any unforeseen expenses that come up in the future. And to speak to relocation, Mr. Notice can provide more specific details, but ahead of the buildings beginning construction, all of them need to be 100% vacant due to the scope of the work, which is quite deep. They're all being gut rehabilitated, and so all the residents will be relocated to probably a combination of market rate units and potentially some within WAGA's portfolio.
Yes.
And it's being overseen by an organization that WAGA has partnered with to identify those market rate units if there are not suitable units within the portfolio.
Thank you so much. Just one more question. What is the proposed timeline regarding with the completion of this project?
So our hope would be to dispose of the buildings in the summer and begin construction at that point, but the actual construction period is predicated on the buildings being vacated. So relocation is now starting. We actually, WAGA and members, representatives from HPD are meeting with the residents this evening to discuss, provide updates on the relocation process. So over the next two to three months, residents will be relocated, and the building will close on construction financing. Our team is working with OMB, and it has to submit the budget to get the HPD loan approved. And after all that comes together, hopefully in the summer of this year, the buildings would begin construction.
And we're working with SAV, who is a consultant who's going to do the relocation.
I was going to ask about that, because, you know, is the communication of the relocation extremely traumatic for folks? So I just want to make sure that you are working with Councilmember Salam, and we're making sure that residents in this project is, you know, does it as planned.
Yes, and we normally do the relocation ourselves, but because of the 38 families getting relocated, we hired a consultant to help us along that process.
And as you may have seen in the unit mix of the future rehab buildings, there are many large units in this project, which is quite exciting, but there are also many large intergenerational families that need to be relocated. So SAV, Relocation Services, is helping support identify those larger relocation units, which are hard to find in New York.
Well, we look forward to looking at seeing that process, making sure it runs smoothly.
Thank you. This applicant panel is now excused.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this item?
No.
Okay, thank you. So if there are any remote public participants who wish to testify and have not already done so, please press the raised hand button now, and if you are here with us in person, please see the sergeant-at-arms to fill out a speaker card. Okay. With there being no other members of the public who wish to testify regarding these two reconsidered land use items for the West 128th and 129th Street Cluster Project, the public hearing is now closed, and the items are laid over. And that concludes today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, Subcommittee, Council, Land Use Staff, and Sergeant-at-arms for your participation today. This meeting is hereby adjourned.